Good evening.
For Illinois.
Nancy Cupcup.
Present.
Terry Pevasich.
Here.
Mike Davenport.
Here.
Cheryl Fuller.
Here.
Dan Nicholas.
Here.
Rick Pavanado.
Here.
Don Renner.
Here.
Eleanor Flipp.
Here.
And Kirk Hoffman.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Let's ask the boisterous group to stand and say something.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening. We'll start with a motion to approve the minutes from the February 25th, 2019 business meeting, the February 25th, 2019 closed meeting, the March 4th, 2019 special workshop meeting, and the March 4th closed meeting.
So moved.
Terry.
Seconded.
And Dan. Terry Pevasich.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
John Renner.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
And Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupcup. Aye. The minutes are approved. So this meeting agenda includes two opportunities for comments from the audience. The first reception of visitors is intended for audience members to address the board about any agenda item on which we will be voting. The second reception of visitors is intended for audience members to address the board on any topic pertaining to the district. Comments are limited to three minutes. Would anybody like to address the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to one of our favorite things in the world.
This is the best thing in the world, yeah. So, let's see, Julia Beckman, President of the Ed Foundation, is here, and we'll invite her forward to present some grant recipients.
And our wonderful treasurer, who makes sure we have enough money to give people, which is always good. We are really proud to present two checks this evening, and they are going to one person, but they're for two different things. He's just here to pick up. One is for -- we want to be sure to tell you that. He's not collecting everything. One is for -- he's going to give you a little more explanation about what they are, but one is for science medical mysteries, which sounds interesting, and the other is for a science, a 3D printer at Downers Grove North. I think, I believe we presented one to South last year, and they are turning out to be quite the wonderful invention. So if, to Mr. Hines, if he would tell us a little bit about what these are.
First of all, I just want to say, I know I've been here pretty often, because they just keep asking us to put in proposals, and I'm not going to apologize for that. So I just, I want to say thank you so much for what the district does for us, the citizens that put in the money for this. It's nice to be able to get things to kids in their hands, because when you get kids the opportunity, they just do amazing things with that. So, heard tell of what they were doing with the 3D printer over at South, and we want to do a little bit of that, just to give you some idea of what we're going to do with a 3D printer. They're actually making devices that they dip into soap bubbles, and kids can pass things through them without breaking the soap bubbles to represent things passing in and out of a cell membrane, for example. As we begin our independent science research courses, both at North and at South, next year, kids are going to want to design and prototype, whether it's a little solar panel that hooks into your phone or anything like that. And I've been hesitant to buy a 3D printer, because I don't want to make chess pieces, because they're very expensive chess pieces, and I wanted my teachers to come back, our teacher, to come back to us and say, "We have a purpose behind this." And I think now we've reached that level of capacity to where we can put one in the science at North. So thank you for that. The other one is quite, I'm going to just show you, the science medical mysteries, because I have these sitting in boxes next to my desk. There's two giant boxes of bones, and that's really what it is. And so it's a disarticulated skeleton that Jeff Grant wants to use, because we have articulated skeletons, but this requires the kids to actually reconstruct what those things look like. So as they do that, we're going to work with that with a 3D printer, because Jeff says, Mr. Grant says that now they can 3D print bones as well, and so we can do some comparative anatomy and physiology, looking on a smaller scale, once we get these. So, thank you very much for that. Thank you for your generosity and giving us this gift. So, we appreciate it.
So right ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Foundation.
Thank you, Foundation, for all that you do. Thank you, Mr. Hines, and keep those proposals coming, because, you know, it's all good. Thank you very much. 2019/20 staffing curriculum.
All right. I'm going to invite Georgia and Sarah to kind of just come to the table here. Yeah, you're good. All right. This is the meeting you've been waiting for, with all of the changes in how we've been doing staffing overall for the year. You were provided, there's a lot of documents you'll see around this in Board Docs. There's an overview staffing memo, that's the one that's called Section 1, 2019/20 Staffing Overview Memo, that kind of breaks down everything you're going to see tonight. But to get to the exciting part of it, instructional FTE at the end of this is at 318.6, quote-unquote "non-instructional," so that's non-classroom, FTE is at 90. Overall, we're up 1.2 FTE for next year. That is, really comes down to changes in course selection, just the natural ebb and flow, plus we add an additional .2 FTE in social work at North, which Sarah can talk about a little bit. Really, at this point, I'm going to have Georgia and Sarah talk about the little fluctuations and decisions that were made at both North and South that led to kind of where we ended up. So, I don't know, who wants to go first?
We're going to kind of just go back and forth.
Back and forth, all right.
And highlight the main areas. So, we're going to start with CTE?
Sure. And as you just heard, really, overall, we're pretty even. So instead of looking at places where we've grown, it's really how we're shifting, and we want to just highlight some of the trends and things we're encouraged by. So, for North and CTE, our culinary program continues to grow. In fact, it has grown beyond our kitchen space, but we're looking at that as an opportunity for us to work within a blended model and flexible learning in some of the initiatives that we have really started to delve into this year. So, what we'll do then is, for two periods a day, we're going to flip the kitchen space and then the classroom space, which really will give our students and our faculty a chance to realize that learning doesn't have to be tied to a particular physical space, and instead you can learn in a lot of different ways. So, in terms of culinary, that is something we're excited about, because we've continued just to see growth in that area.
And we saw a slight increase in the FTE and CTE, and that's because, for the first time in the years that I've certainly been in this role, and maybe even longer than that, when Gina was, we actually are going to run two sections of our work co-op program, which is really, really exciting. They usually run two at North, but we actually usually don't run two at South. And those are students that sign up, and then for either a period at the end of the day, sometimes even a couple of periods, they are out in the community, working at various jobs. And so during the day, they have a class affiliated with that actual program, and then they're working at the end of the day. And the nice thing is, it really meets the needs of a lot of different students that have interests in a lot of different areas, and allows some students that need that time to work as well, an opportunity to make that work within the confines of the school day. So, that was the main place that we saw an increase there. And this year, we had one of our new young teachers teaching that class, brand-new to us this year, and I think that is part of the draw, too. So, that's pretty exciting.
So, I can talk just a bit about English at North, and specifically, what we're seeing in terms of our reading classes. You might remember, a couple of years back, we didn't run our highest level of Strategies III. We just weren't having the enrollment to support it. But in the last two years, we have run Strategies I, II, and III, and we'll continue to do that. And we feel like that, also combined with our freshman and sophomore seminar, it just offers us multiple opportunities to provide support, ongoing support, for students that are showing us that they need it. So that was something that we're encouraged by in terms of the reading department.
Science? Should I move on to science?
Sure. We're happy to report that our newest Project Lead the Way course, the Principles of Biomedical Science, is growing and has filled in nicely with three sections at North. Our request for innovation in STEM research was a little lower, so what we're going to do is combo that course at North, so we give students the opportunity to learn in that way, and we'll run that in tandem with research topics in earth science. So those fit together nicely. We feel that there is differentiation opportunities in order to make that work, and it will give us a chance to pilot that course at North.
Likewise, at South, we are going to run three sections of that Project Lead the Way course. So, as we kind of suspected, that course was very popular. Kids are really intrigued by that biomedical science course. And then we are running a section of Innovations in STEM Research. We got the enrollment for that. We were not sure, when we proposed that class, how that might affect the Research Topics class, because that class always is sometimes, you know, borderline as to whether or not it's going to run. And the other class we weren't sure how it might impact is the Biology II class. That did not, it did not impact Biology II at all at South. We have, I think, 29 students that wanted to take Biology II, but we are not going to run the Innovations, or the original, yeah, the Research Topics class, which is okay. You know, the interest in that has gone back and forth. So, we're pretty excited that they're looking forward to this Project Lead the Way course.
So for Social Studies, this year at North, we are relatively consistent. The Social Studies electives at North continue to be very popular. We're seeing growth in multicultural studies, and we feel like that is probably due to the fact that it's a really unique way to meet the civics requirement, and it sure seems like, for a lot of students, that's a course that they connect with. So, I was happy to see that.
And we are up in Social Studies at South next year, and that's, we haven't been in a few years, so that's actually a really good thing. We're not sure exactly why, but we do know that, like Sarah mentioned, the Social Studies electives at the junior/senior year, while they have to take the third year anyways, those are some very popular courses, both the more history-based courses and the more, you know, social science courses. And so, what we suspect is that the current junior class, which is the first class that had to meet the civics requirement, signed up as juniors to meet their civics requirement, and took a second semester elective, but that many of them, there was still another Social Studies elective that they wanted to take, and so they're opting to stay in Social Studies and take that elective in their senior year. So, that's probably why we're seeing a little bit of a bump in the Social Studies area. The other thing that's pretty exciting is, at South next year, we do have increase in our AP United States History, our AP European History, and US Foreign Policy. And US Foreign Policy and government tend to rise a little bit, the closer we get to elections, and then government kind of peaks in an election year, and then kind of goes back down, and that's just a normal cycle for some of those types of classes in Social Studies.
So, in the realm of C-triple-S, Hank mentioned it, but we're excited at North to know that we have a little bit more social work support coming to us. That .2 equates to an additional period a day of support that we'll have to offer our students, and that means all the more opportunities when they come to us, and we know that they need help, to make sure someone is available to meet that need. So, we're not seeing a decrease in the need for social work support amongst our students. So, we are thankful for that. The other thing that I would mention, and Scott might talk more about, but we are seeing also that, within special services, there is a little bit of a shift to more co-taught teaching, and maybe not as much of our programmatic special ed, which is good news, because that means we have more students that are accessing rigor with support, and they're going into classes within our core curriculum, and we think that's the right way to head.
You want me to start PE?
Sure, go ahead.
So PE is the final area where we saw a slight increase. And again, it's hard to say exactly why. You can look at just numbers. Basically, the current freshman class, that's obviously next-year sophomore class, is a very large class. It's one of the larger classes that we've had in a while. They all have to take health, so that translates into a little bump in health there. And then our incoming freshman class is also a bit larger than our grad, current graduating senior class. So, PE is one of those areas that everyone has to get involved in. So, we have a little bit of an increase there. And it's always interesting to see how the different electives they choose kind of ebb and flow. Next year, we had an increased interest in dance. It's always popular, but it definitely increased, aerobics increased, which was interesting, and the gymnastics class, which we don't always run, increased. So, it's just kind of interesting to watch those numbers over the years, and what kids seem to be gravitating toward in PE.
Say, similarly, at North, we see the same sorts of things. Sometimes it's surprising to know that one course is going to run higher numbers. We are seeing a bit of an increase in fitness, which I think makes sense, because that really lends itself to how we exercise as adults, and how we sort of cultivate our own exercise, our own exercise experiences. So, the other thing that I'll mention at North High is that, over my time here, I've seen an increase in early bird PE. There were years that it didn't run, and then there was a year that we had one section of it, and then we had two sections, and now we are at two very full sections, which I think what that tells us is that our students appreciate that option for some flexibility in their day, and I think their parents do as well, so.
All right, thank you. So, that's the summary sheet. You can see it. You know, above is kind of the classroom, and that, where it says, I guess, instructional, non-instructional, we should probably come up with better vocabulary for that, because it's all instructional. But the top is the stuff that's pretty much scheduled in the classroom, the traditional classroom kind of settings. And then the stuff that's in that non-instructional is really non-classroom type of activities. And you can kind of see how that's been allocated. This is that new structure, without all of those footnotes and explanation, and this should get easier then to track from year to year how it works. So, we worked through a lot of bugs this year, and I appreciate everybody's efforts in that, but I think we're in a much better spot.
So Hank, do you know, so the bottom number, 408.6, 90 of that being non-instructional, you know, support, how does that compare to other districts in our cohort?
It's hard to say, because not every district, it'd be hard to compare that from district to district. You could look at job-specific type of things, like, how many deans do we have in comparison to other schools, or how many counselors are those. But when you look at the whole bucket, when you start to get into things like department chair release, how one school does that is very different from another school. Instructional coaches, bilingual, I mean, there's some that are pretty core standard from school district to school district.
So the areas I would be most interested in knowing, how we compare against our, like, social worker psychologists and counselors? How do we compare with our support in those areas?
We trend on the top end in those areas. Yeah. We're staffed as well or better than many schools in the area. But that's a trend that will probably continue. You know, that's just a growing need. And as I've said before, due to, due to the drop in funding by the state in social services, the longstanding organizations like schools, hospitals, police departments, fire department, prisons, are all the institutions that are picking up a lot of that, yeah, a lot of those other services that are needed.
Regretfully, but necessary.
And you feel we have, in those areas, adequate support? Yeah, I think we're going to need to continue to dedicate support to it, and over the next couple of years, it'll probably continue to grow. But at this point, we're meeting the requirements by national organization, you know, the recommendations by national organizations. We spend a lot of time talking about it with our team. You know, the .2 at North, we were happy to be able to add that this year.
I just know we've been talking about how the needs are increasing, and the burden is being shifted. I was actually surprised it was only .2 increase. So that was just making sure that we're requesting what we need to support our students.
We added a lot of resources last year, and then we were kind of shifting some philosophies and ways we do things, and a result of that, this .2 is another change in that, and you kind of, kind of see how that shakes out over the next year. But I would imagine, next year at this time, we'll probably be talking about this again. Yeah. So. All right, continuing on, we have more for you, but wait, there's more. I'm going to turn it over to Gina to talk through changes in curricular programs.
Okay. So, as you can see, we have 18 courses for which enrollment is low, and we are recommending canceling. Some of these courses are courses that have run in the past or not, some that we cancel every year, some that will fill one year with very healthy enrollment, and then the next year with a handful. So it kind of varies. On the second page are the courses that we are recommending for approval, in which enrollment is under 20. And just as a reminder, this includes basically our general education courses, intervention courses, we don't list on here, special education courses, EL courses that typically have enrollments of less than 20, and need to, in some cases by law. So, these are the courses that we are recommending for enrollment. Many of them are programmatic. So, for example, our architecture course at North, and it's combined, different levels, PLTW, which is the top level in both buildings, and the capstone course. We are not combining any courses. We do not have any students traveling across town to take classes for next year. One thing that I'm extremely pleased with is that we will be offering our students the opportunity to take Calculus III again next year. We are still partnering with Lamont. We have nine District 99 students who signed up out of a potential 11. We had 11 students who were either sophomores, believe it or not, and juniors in our Calculus BC course. Two students have decided not to continue on to Calculus III, but are taking AP Stats. And we have nine students who are taking the Calc III. It will be taught at South High. So North students will travel, and obviously the Lamont students will travel. So very happy about that, because every year it's been a little tenuous in terms of if the course will run or not.
One more year. One year at a time.
One year at a time.
And Gina's put in a lot of effort in making sure that that course runs.
Gina, I want to say thank you for looking at those classes that maybe don't meet the requirements as far as enrollment go, and saying, "Hey, those kids have worked hard to get in those classes. Those classes continue a pathway where it does narrow down." And so, even though you don't have 20 kids, you're letting them run, thank you, because those classes, it's not a hard number. There's certain exceptions to this, and these are those classes. And so hopefully, the ones that got cut this year, maybe, every other year, maybe there'll be enough that'll funnel in then, and then it'll pop back on the radar. So I just want to say thank you for allowing those classes that kind of, not the English, you know, or the math, that kind of have 16, 18 kids, and you're letting it go. So thanks.
And that Calc III class, that's a college credit class.
It's a second sema, second year college class. It's a second year college.
You know, that's part of the reason why my daughter's going to graduate in three years instead of, instead of four, because she got credit for that class.
It's nice we can partner.
Yes.
Because it was close to being gone, and so that's nice. It's nice it's working out that way.
I did have a question. On the, on the South High cuts, the personal trainer certification? I mean, I know that Scroll up there, Tony. Enrollment's down, but there's still over 20 students interested in that.
It is, but they, with PE, it's, depending on what they're doing in PE, they're sometimes forced into semesters of it, and so they were not even in one, they weren't all together in one semester. So the number was actually much smaller in the two semesters, and sometimes we do try to see how many of them we can move over, but it doesn't always work. So we're hopeful. There was a change this year in instructor, and not that the current instructor's not good, it was just a change from the one that kind of founded it. And so now that the new one is, you know, kind of done it for a year, we're hoping that next year, and it'll be on the PE department's radar, because they really want to run it. So they can kind of, you know, really keep honed in on students that would be a good fit for that class, so that we can run it again.
It's been very popular.
Yeah, we definitely want to run it.
There's been a lot of interest in that.
Yeah, yeah.
Was there any discussion in combining AP Art History across campuses? You ran it with 16 last year, you've got 12 at North and four at South. Is there any thought to that?
Combine courses, we have done that with TV. We actually did it one year with AP Computer Science, but only a handful of, I believe North students went to South. We typically do not get a lot of interest on the part of students to travel across town. There are exceptions. Calc III is a really good exception. But we typically do not get a lot of interest in that. I can't say for sure these 16 students wouldn't be interested, or, you know, before traveling, really. Right.
Yeah, Calc III, we've been able, because it's a North Central class, and Dr. Wiley, I think, actually likes starting at 7:30 in the morning. When it has not been at Lamont, we, the kids have been able to go back and forth and only lose first period. But to run a course first period, they have to lose two periods, because they have to have a travel period. And that's what makes TV really hard, is sometimes kids are like, "Oh, I don't want to give up two periods a day." So
Even after they sign off.
But we're always, Gina's always really open to looking for those opportunities.
So maybe, though, going forward, you know, just thinking about our Chromebooks and what we're trying to, I mean, could we foresee a possibility of these four students being able to still be in a classroom at North, but be participating in a class that was actually being conducted at South? Is that something that's We're on a, I think we're on a pathway that, in the future, those kinds of blended experiences will be more realistic. Yeah. How far down the road do you think that is? Depends. Depends on the course, and the teacher, and the subject matter. Some subject matter lends itself more, as you've seen with consumer ed, to a blended experience than something that's more performance-based, a little tougher to do, you know, if you actually have to be in the classroom performing, or watching other people perform. You know, it depends. I understand. Is this something that's really under our control, to be able to set something, or is there, are there some state guidelines or something that would prevent us from It's more under our control than not under our control. Okay. I'd have interest in looking at how that applies in the future. This would, you know, I don't know if that would work for this, but that seems like that would be a nice tool to have the students have more, more offerings than they might have otherwise. Yeah, I think the work, you know, that Rob is doing with the Blended Explorer staff group that's really digging into this and starting to work with it, and our blended consumer ed, are all spots where we're kind of dipping our toe in the water, and I would imagine that, within the next few years, it's a real possibility.
But isn't that actually a different experience? I mean, isn't blended, you're partially doing self-study and partially participating in a class, as opposed to just a remote class, which is, I think, is what you're talking about?
Like an online class?
Where you're Skyping in and, in real time.
Like a distance learning is very different than a blended, yeah. Yeah. So does that change your response to what I No, I think in the right, with the right subject area, and the right teacher, and the right group of kids, it's totally realistic, but I don't think we're there for next year yet. No, but in terms of maybe bringing AP Art History back, you know, in the future, similar numbers
I think if you ran a class like that every other year, I think kids could plan their schedule. I think instead of trying to accommodate every year, I think maybe if you said, "This class, every other year," the kid who's in that sequence to get there, you can't just, that's not your first class in art that you can sign up for.
That's right.
I think they could plan their schedule accordingly then, and it would fit in, and they could say, "Okay." It's like in college, remember? There's some classes you got to take in the spring, it's only offered in the spring every year.
Okay.
So you could, you'd plan your schedule then. So, "I'm not taking it next year, but then the next year I'd have all these kids."
I think that would be a good thing for us to analyze, is which ones have been like this.
Because there's more to this class than just sitting in front of a computer.
We've done that.
There's more to this class.
And this naturally is a course that seems to run every other year.
Yeah.
It does, anyhow.
And AP Music Theory at South did that for a very long time, and so the kids kind of knew, like, it's going to run every of knew, like it's going to run every other year and then for maybe a few years now, we ran it every year. But I have no doubt that since it's not running this year, that it'll probably-
It'll go next year.
Run next year.
I betcha.
So the, so the counselors play a key role then in, in helping with this too then, right? In making the students aware, hey, this isn't going to be this year, but the following year it probably will. We want to make sure that the counselors are communicating that.
For your planning.
And they probably keep a running total too of how many students really want to take it, but weren't able to take it this year. They know, hey, I've got 15 students that want to take it again, so they can.
The counselors and the department chairs work real closely.
Yeah, so they can plan together.
Those kids have to work towards that class again. You can't just walk in and say, I want to sign for that class. You have four years of, three to four years of music under your belt.
Right.
So these classes, they know. The people on the ground know who's going to be signing up and who's not.
All right, I'm going to turn, and wait, there's more. I'm going to turn the next section over to Scott to talk about special services.
All right, so like Sarah mentioned, at North, we have a .5 decrease in FT this year and it's like she mentioned about the decreasing our instructional classes, which is always a good thing to keep an eye on, which we do. South is actually pretty much staying the same, has a slight increase of the .2 overall. And then transition is at the same, which is the 9.8. Sarah mentioned the social work increase of the .2 and I want to thank Mike's in the audience here, so our department chairs, Mike, Joy and Alyssa for all their work and then the work with Sarah and Georgia. So it's a big task to kind of put all those numbers together and I give them a lot of credit for that. So I get the easy part just to tell you what the results are. So, so overall, we're at a decrease of .3 for special ed for next year.
All right, moving on to the next section, which is honorable dismissals. So these are, most of these teachers, one is a, a teacher that came back, came back and filled in for us part-time second semester, is a retiree, so we're not going to need his services next year. And then the other ones are just due to the normal ebb and flow in sectioning, will likely be hired back at a lower amount than what they're at right now, just the, the common ebbs and flows that occur. There's a bunch of other documents in Section 4 in there, those are the action items that happen tonight to execute all of this. And then if we go to Section 5, this is the retention of tenured, of non-tenured staff, okay, which is pretty much what it says it is. This is the tenured staff that we're bringing back for the next school year, so quite a few here. We have a good, strong, young staff, group of staff there. And then finally, the next document in Section 6 is the teachers that are being granted tenure. And just to provide an overview of what tenure means, in our district, non-tenured staff are observed, so during the first four years, generally speaking, that teachers are here, observed both formally and informally multiple times each year by both department chairs and administrators. This is a rigorous process that requires extensive time in the pre-observation, observation and post-observation phases. Ultimately, it culminates in the staff member reflecting on how the lessons went and engaging in rich conversations with either, either the department chair or the administrator or sometimes both about those reflections and the evaluator's observations. Throughout their non-tenure years, the staff members must continually show growth as an educator. The staff members being brought forward this evening for a recommendation of tenure have proven through this process that they are excellent classroom teachers and many are involved in other aspects of our mission such as co-curricular and extracurricular activities. This group collectively have coached or sponsored many teams and students' activities and we are extremely excited to bring them forward for this recommendation and we look forward to the contributions they're going to make for our students for many years to come. You can see all of their names listed in the materials. In the past, the principals would say something about each person, but as our staff continues to get younger, it continues to be a very long list, so we thought we would generally speak tonight about how the process works. However, all of these, all of the staff that achieve tenure are recognized at a breakfast in each school each year. So. I'll just say, I, I've had personal experience with a couple of the names on the list and am very, very happy to see them on the list, so. I'm sure the group as a whole is, is awesome, but if the two that I'm aware of are any, any reflection of the group as a whole, it's, it's a great list, so. So for tonight, there's really not an approval of the actual overall package, it comes in bits and pieces throughout the personnel actions, but that's overall what we're looking at for next year. So thank you everybody for all your work in the process on the administrative team.
Thank you, I thank you all.
I, I'd be interested to know though, was it, was it easier this year with the new process?
It was different.
It was different. I think what I can tell you for sure is that we see that it will be much more clear to us and I think it will be easier next year. The first year of a learning year, you know, you're working out some of the things just with basic spreadsheet items, but I think overall, George and I have both said that we think this is a process that will work for us.
Good.
Well, you look like you haven't pulled all your hair out.
Too frazzled.
Maybe, yeah, yeah. Thank you, thank you for, because I'm sure it was difficult.
Thank you, Sarah and Georgia, you guys are free to escape.
Run now.
All right, moving on to asbestos. I don't know if there's a good transition to that, but-
We're afraid it's asbestos.
What a downer.
Yeah.
Terry, I pulled all my hair out, unfortunately.
But I'm bummed.
It was opening all those beds.
Didn't take too long.
It had to be the asbestos. Okay, I'll recap the memo real quick here for you guys. We'll approve later on in the action item. We work with our environmental specialist Aries, I've been working with the district for a long time and they put together the bid specifications for abatement for North and South for Phase A this summer. We'll have some work done over spring break, I'll mention that in a minute. So we got good bidding, we got nine proposals for North and 10 proposals for South. So quite the list, very impressed with that. Low acceptable bids for North High, Technica Environmental Services was $86,000 and for South High National Environment and Demo for $68,000. So the scope of work consists mainly of floor tile for both schools with some cove base in some classrooms, but really specific to floor tile and a lot at South that's going to be happening over spring break. Again, I'll get back to that in a second. During the summer will be the majority of the removal, but to get ahead of the game, we're going to remove the hallway which has tile outside of it over spring break so we can get a head start and get going on that main office over at South High School. Both schools, all asbestos has been removed, it's full containment, so notifications and legal requirements will be doing as well. Three phases, obviously the first of, of three. Phase two and three will be less abatement as we work with them. We've seen the most being on the first phase, so numbers will come down on second and third phase as well, but this is a budgeted item that was broken out in our GMX as owner's cost and we had a line in it for $400,000. So as you can see, we're doing pretty well, we'll go into the next two phases, I'm confident that we'll be within that number in three years, so pretty happy overall on, on what we're doing. We, both companies, we did a complete scope review and they both met our requirements as contractors.
All right, any questions for Jim? It just occurred to me that, that for the South students, the week that we're in right now will be the last week that they will be in a building not under construction for the next, you know, a couple of-
Three years.
Yeah, yeah, two years, so I don't know if they realize that, but.
They will soon.
They will.
They will and-
It's about to go.
The day they come back.
All right, this item is up for approval later on this evening, as Jim mentioned.
Did we take plenty of pictures of before?
Oh, I think we have.
We have a lot of before pictures, yeah.
I, you know.
The buildings look pretty much the same for about 20 years.
58 plus 52 years.
Yeah.
That's right. All right, textbook recommendations, I'll bring Rob up here in case you have any questions, but.
That's the chair.
Yeah, you get a chair, Rob.
The hot seat.
Hot seat. Hot seat, go ahead, Rob.
Are there any questions? Just two books.
Yeah.
We haven't received any since we talked to you last, last month, so.
Good job.
We haven't received any from the public.
No, nothing from the public?
All right, hot seat didn't last long. All right, well done.
Great work, great work.
Up for approval as well.
Student fees.
All right, student fees. This was one where we got a lot of feedback after we talked, well, a lot, a few family members reached out to us after the last time we presented, particularly not around the actual fees for instructional, curricular, those kinds of things, but around the family passes and how that structure would work. We had a, a couple of challenges in the old family pass in the execution of how it worked and getting just all kinds of issues around it that we were trying to solve in this. The first proposal was to eliminate it, which was not well-received by several families, so we went back and kind of took a look at it again and looked at the data again and we think we've ended up in a spot that is actually much better than where we were before, moving from a family pass to an adult athletic event pass. The cost for two adults in the family is pretty similar to what it was in the past and now we've also added the fact that an adult coming with children, all the children come in with the adult at no cost. By charging a proposed cost of $40 for each adult, that allows each adult to have their own pass rather than trying to keep track of the family pass. It also allows us to recognize in some families, there could be one adult that's managing the household or there could be four or more that are managing the household or there could be adult children or grandparents or any number of family situations that by changing this to an adult pass, people can mix and match and match what their family structure is and allow that to work. We'd sell it online and then once people ordered that pass out of the business office, we would just mail it home to people. That way, one of the challenges was before people picking up and not picking up passes and those kinds of things, so we're just going to mail it straight home to take care of the, I'm sure the management cost of our people managing it versus the postage is the same or less in, in the whole scheme of things. So we think we've ended up in a good spot there with the athletic pass. The other fees are, as Mark presented at the last meeting, they haven't changed at all, so at this point, we'll take, Mark and I'll take any questions that you have around these things.
No, I just thank you for making the change to being flexible to the, to the changes. I think it's a good solution.
Yeah, that's a good change.
So I just, so, and I didn't do this, but I was meant to, did we go back for those families who said, hey, this is really going to be an issue for us and this is why? Did we apply this against their circumstances and-
Yeah, they, they were going to both participate and so it would have cost them quite a bit.
So they're actually, it's actually, they're actually better off, this is-
Yes.
All right, just wanted to make sure.
This solves those concerns that were raised to us by several families.
They look, cost them $5 more, but they, it's better than eliminating it, so I think they would be-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And the cost for admission is going up anyway, so $5 more seems appropriate.
Yeah, spread over the whole school year.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Nope, so this is up for approval later on this evening as well.
Good compromise.
All right, renewal of transportation contract, well, it's a good example of we get feedback and adapt, so. Renewal of transportation contract with First Student, I'll turn this over to Mark.
Sure. We're actually in the, currently in our fifth year of the contract with First Student.
Is it been five years?
Yeah, we, we-
I know.
This is our second, we've done a second extension and we're going to recommend a third extension and actually, this was started out to be a tough year, it was a tough year for everybody because of the way that it was such rough finding drivers and then you end up with substitutes and it just never goes as smoothly, smoothly as you'd like, but, and actually quite honestly, we weren't pleased with the person who was in charge of our portion of the, the terminal. They didn't have anybody dedicated for us, but it was a main contact person and he's moved on, which is a good thing. So we, we, the person who's replaced him is excellent, I'm hearing from, I had one call from one of the administrators saying this is the best service he's ever had and it's only been a short time with this lady, so we, we think that she's a good person, but we're also going to add to that a contract, designated contract manager person, he's only going to work, he or she, we're going to have a say in who this person is, will only be responsible for District 99 and our two sender districts, 58 and 68. One of the things that we've been trying to do for years and it's never come to pass is to actually restructure the routes so that we have a more efficient number of runs and that's what this one individual just never could get it done for us. There was always a problem with it, there was always something that kept it from happening. Having our own designated person, I really do think we'll be able to trim down a couple runs and not, not really make any service, you know, problems for our students. We, we could, we should be having somewhere in the average of 31 to maybe 38 average kids on a bus and we're, we're below 30, we're below 15, 20 on many buses, so. It's, now some of it is distance and some of it, there are runs and some of these runs are coordinated with feeder and so they only have so much time, so it's not as simple as I just made it sound, but there's, but there are certainly, I think, ways we can go to improve it because the increase that they're asking for is 4.5%, which is typically we try and hold it to CPI, right, or CPI plus new construction as a revenue stream marker. So this will run us probably $40,000 more than we had projected for it. I'm still seeing many of my peers getting double-digit increases because they're still trying to fix the, the shortage of driver issue and, and attract more drivers. The issue of the, the, you know, minimum wage is washing through a lot of different groups and it's still hitting them, so we'll, we'll be in the lower half of the schools that provide busing in terms of, in DuPage County for high schools, so some are, some are really paying quite a bit. I think the fact that we do tier it with our sender districts has helped quite a bit. So we're all, all three of the districts are recommending it to our boards of education to, to accept the 4.5% increase. Another thing that's kind of exciting about this, and there's just, there's going to be a small charge for this, it's, it's going to be in the neighborhood of a couple hundred dollars a month, is if we like it, there's a new product that they are using called First View and it's a software, GPS tracking software that number one, we could, at each of our buildings and at the ASC, we'll be able to see where every one of our buses is at every time, online on a, on a map. But it also has an, an app for parents and students to download under their phones. No charge to them, we would be paying the cost of having that. Now, they're prototyping it and it's, they're, we're looking at it at the senders first and they're actually looking at it right now. We're going to suggest that we take a look at it in April at our level and just see how, how it works altogether. So it's pretty exciting because then a kid could go and say, okay, where's my bus? I know it's late. We joked that, okay, the one thing that, what if a bus breaks down and they send another bus and they don't switch it, it looks like this kid, this bus is up in, you know, Decatur or something, but they say they, you know, they know how to do that quickly and so we'll, you know, we, we think, we really are excited about, there's, this products, there's products like this have been around for a while. In fact, there's even tracking that some of the elementars have done on their students getting on the bus, so they have like a little GPS tracker on the, each student, but this is a little simpler and, which, you know, sometimes we would like that tracking thing as well, our students, I imagine, but anyway, so, so there's some improvement they're doing to our service that we think will help, helps me at least feel a little bit better about, you know, going 4.5% instead of 3%. So I'm recommending that we do accept the proposal for them to increase it by 4.5% for next year.
Any questions for Mark?
I just need to make a comment quickly, as someone who used to take the bus, I think the, looking into the app or the First View or whatever would be a really good idea because especially in like the colder months, if you can see that your bus isn't going to be here for another 10 minutes, you can wait inside for an extra five minutes.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That's one of the benefits.
Things like that, yeah, yeah.
I think that's really a plan.
All right, that's up for approval later this evening. We've added an item pedestrian safety, I imagine this will be on and off periodically going forward. So I'll let Nancy share first with some of the work that you've been doing with IASB.
Okay, so we've been working with a woman by the name of Deanna Sullivan. We will be scheduling some time to just strategize with her. It's kind of up in the air when it's going to be... Probably going to be after April 2nd. Undoubtedly, it's going to be after April 2nd.
When you say "we", you mean...
Hank and I, I'm sorry. So, the idea is that we'll meet with her to see what IASB will... How they can help us and what their thoughts are and strategize how we can bring together the other boards, et cetera, and then we'll come back to the board and say, "This is what we've learned. What do you think? How do you want to be involved?", et cetera. So, we're moving slowly, but we're moving forward. And I see you submitted an article. I know Mike sent an article to all of us about traffic.
We passed that out. We made copies for everybody tonight.
And then, another article.
Yeah. Yeah, that's interesting, from Portland, their vision project.
Like I said, it was in the latest edition of Consumer Reports. I opened it up, and it was like, wow.
But there's some great recommendations in there.
And this was... And this is a great example of a study of what they did in Portland. And just, I mean, the single... The single thing that you can do to have the biggest impact at lessening the likelihood of pedestrian accidents is to lower the speed limit. It seems kind of obvious, but...
A no-brainer.
That's it. And every time you drop that speed limit, it doesn't mean that people will be going necessarily at speed limit you're putting up there, but how much they're going over will be less. And there's a significant drop when you go from 25 to 20. So, thanks for spreading that around.
And then, I mentioned last month that we talked to White about feasibility and cost proposal of pedestrian walkways, just to, you know, find out what it would take to do it. They did an initial look at South and North. North, they submitted a proposal of $13,500 to do kind of the mock-up feasibility and cost of a pedestrian bridge at North. At South, though, they have said... Our property at South High doesn't warrant a full feasibility study because we don't have land on the other side of 63rd Street to connect a bridge to, as well as the power lines that run along 63rd Street would have to be buried or moved to even begin the conversation of feasibility. So, I guess I need to know if there's any resistance to the idea of going forward with the feasibility study at that cost.
The only thing I would add, based on you guys talking with ISAB and you bringing forth an article, do we think we're there yet to kind of proceed with this? Or do we want to just continue to explore? Not forever, you know, but explore what we would really be interested in pursuing.
I second that question.
I do, too. Fourth. And we have a new board coming on. We don't know the makeup. I'd hate to make this decision until we get the new board that would really then implement whatever policy we do decide to do.
Okay.
Avenue we go to.
So, continue to work on the government side. We know what this feasibility study is and where we sit. So, kind of move this all together in tandem.
To be fair, I mean, the proposal that we may ask for from White may include feasibility for other things, too. And I'd rather have those things all together than be looking at this piece, this piece. I guess it's helpful to understand, you know, I mean, this initial information is useful to the conversation, but to go further with this solution without looking at everything.
I think so. Before you write that check. And I'd feel more comfortable with the next makeup of the board because they're going to have to implement then whatever path we decide to set on. I'd rather them be on that path from the beginning.
Right, and there's a chance you could have two new members.
We don't know, so...
Plus, we have to get all the other government agencies.
Yeah. I mean, this is going to be a long process.
Yeah, I think we just not make a decision, and I know we won't because we don't do that overnight, but really see what makes the most sense.
Well, we have this, and that proposal will be there, and it's good for a while, so I think that that makes sense to do it all in tandem.
Are we absolutely sure we haven't done this before? I know we've talked about it before.
We've never done the true feasibility study, yeah.
At least not since you and I.
I know, well, no, I...
Discussion, but I don't think we have...
Was it discussed with the fence or no?
Yes.
The parking lot and the fence?
When they... With the fence, yeah. I thought it was part of that discussion. It may have been just a discussion.
Discussion, but I can't remember engaging somebody to do a feasibility study.
Mike's correct. We discussed it as a group. It was part of the site plan improvements, possibilities, specific to the new parking lot and then the fence that came with that. But we never did a cost or a drawing or anything further than that. We all felt that it was a very high price and something not to look at as a high priority at that time.
That's my other concern. It may come back to us, something we can't do anyway.
Where the bridge is at exactly and all those things, I think that what the public needs to know, the community needs to know, is that this is something that we are...
Absolutely.
We are actually moving on fairly quickly, I would say. I mean...
To get to this point, yes.
Yes, yes. And that some, you know, improvements will be made. If I'm part of this going forward, that's where...
This is just one in a very long list at both North and South High that have been brought to us by staff, students, community members, you know, parents have all... And we're still taking anybody that has anything. They can contact me, and we'll look into everything that's on that extensive list.
I do appreciate you reiterating that. It's absolutely important to the point. We want to be sure we're making the right decisions and being physically responsible along the way.
Coming up with the solutions, it'll be the most effective.
Exactly.
That's the goal.
The only thing I would ask is that we all... I don't live in Downers Grove, but as we interface with people who are running for office within Downers Grove, and I mean, this will obviously affect people outside of Downers Grove area, too, but since our schools physically reside in Downers Grove, please, for everyone, please reiterate our interest in this because I think it's going to be difficult. It's going to be something difficult to do because it's going to be difficult to change. And there's so many people who interplay with it different, especially around South.
Yes.
Especially around 63rd, but it's not just 63rd. I mean, there's just a lot going on. So, please let your elected or soon-to-be elected representatives know that this is important to you and that you'd really like them to keep an open mind and try to be supportive as we go forward.
Yes, and point to the community.
Hank, when you say 63rd Street, are you talking about 63rd and Dunham? Or are you talking about 63rd and is it Springside?
And they looked at the whole stretch of our property along 63rd Street. But 63rd and Dunham is where...
Most of the students cross.
We have a larger number of students crossing. Although Springside does have a good number of kids that cross there without a light.
Any idea of the numbers on a daily basis that are walking across the street?
I don't know off the top of my head.
These are exactly the kind of things we need to know to be able to make decisions about what we should do and how we should go about doing it.
Well, there was also the concern about Main Street and Norfolk.
Norfolk, yeah.
There's that crosswalk there, but a lot of students, you know, cross there.
Yeah, no, I mean, the concerns about safety are not limited to just the boundaries of our school property, but the neighborhoods in which we exist.
Right.
And knowing that we have students walking, is it... What's the mile and a half? Everybody within a mile and a half, I think is what it is, correct?
Buses, after that.
After that, but you... A mile and a half around the school, you get kids coming. And so, what does that data look like? And where is the majority... Where are the majority of the crossings and...
And that varies from year to year also. You know, you get pockets of children.
Year to year, seasonally? Yep. I mean, I... If we take... We need to take the same approach with this that we've done so thoughtfully with our master facility planning, right?
Agreed.
I mean, and I know that we have a tragedy, and there's the community, and we all want to do something right now. I mean, the best thing we can do is to look at this thing comprehensively and go about this as thoughtfully as we typically do with the work that we do here. And we'll come up with the right solution.
Well, if you look at the feedback from like this one study, there are some changes that we could make that have nothing to do with construction that could have a far greater impact on the larger community than...
That's right.
Than another solution could have. So, it's worth thoughtful discussion and trying to move forward.
At one of my sites I go to, they started with the speed limit being 27. And there was a talk around, you know, people tend to pay it... Because I noticed it right away.
Yep.
The next step they did, because people were going 29 or 32, is they implemented some major speed bump. So, the first day I came through there and almost jumped. I decided that I wouldn't be doing that again, so...
But I'd say just from experience, like as watching people leave the school, like I just drive to school two in front every day, but watching people cross the street, like Dunham and 63rd has like a designated crosswalk, but watching people cross at Springside over here in 63rd, it's like just instinct. Like, it's like nerve-wracking watching people try to time it and then just like bolt across the street with all their stuff. I mean, it's, you know... People want to do it because, you know, it's closer to their house. It's more convenient for them, but it's still a major safety concern, just watching it happen.
For sure.
And I know you mentioned maybe like a few meetings back that like some community members had expressed concern about Springside specifically, so...
Yeah, I'm hoping that we'll hear from the county. I heard that we would hear soon about 63rd and Springside, but I don't know what soon means in government, county government, so...
We know there's definitely concern.
This is Nancy's point, right? That we, as individuals, need to do our part to advocate for it and not to the people that make these decisions because there's so many layers to it.
It's going to be hard.
And if I don't hear back this week, I will follow up after spring break with the county and see why we haven't heard back yet.
Are we going to reach out to the village to...
Village has already been involved.
I have some history in petitioning the village to slow speeds in this town and was told that decreasing speed is actually more dangerous. So, I'm a little curious to hear how the village would respond to decreasing speed on Main Street around our schools.
I haven't had the conversation about decreasing speed, but the village realizes we have real concerns and has been interested in engaging in conversations with us. They've been open to dialogue. I don't know where that leads, but they're at least open to talking about what our concerns are.
I have to add, I mean, did they show you data to back up their opinion on that?
They sent me a study.
They did, okay.
Oh, you could make a study say almost anything.
It seemed plausible to you? It did not seem plausible. So, okay, well, that's reassuring because, I mean, the things that I've read say the opposite, and it also, common sense seems to dictate that the slower something's going, you know, equal and opposite reaction, right? So...
Something tells me they didn't want to change the speed limit, and they used every...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We have no trouble believing.
I will say, I don't know about the past.
Great organization, but I think we should...
There could be some potential speed bumps in our going...
There are also some improvements that we talked about just generally
looking at like behind South on the street where we own, maybe improving lighting, marking the speed bumps better, taking a look at traffic patterns. With the new construction, taking a look at traffic patterns where people like turn around and pick heads up in the... In front of the different schools, so... There's some things we will have control of.
I drove through a hospital zone in Chicago a couple years back, and they had a camera at one end of the block, and they were doing speed enforcement with like red light cameras sort of stuff, but except like in a zone. I'm not suggesting that, I'm just that the technology... There are so many things that could be done potentially that might not involve a ton of infrastructure.
I think strategically placed potholes would be...
I don't know if there's any...
Maybe that's what Woodbridge and Downers Grove are doing.
That's what's going on.
It slowed me down the other day for $300 worth, okay.
All right, master facility plan bid progress. I'm going to turn this one over to Jim to talk about the February 14th bid opening, which isn't our most recent one that was huge. It's that first one. They're still working through the most recent one, so... Jim?
Thank you. So, just a recap of this document that was attached. Bid opening one was the 14th for a slew of different bid opportunities and packages. If you want to scroll down real quick, Tony. So, we had athletic field, concrete, excavation, steel, asphalt fencing. So, 26 total bids between all six packages. Good contractors worked with everyone but one, so... But they've all have gone through our system of scope and review, and they're ready to go. They understand the project. Gmax budget to your right, if you scroll back up, Tone. Good news here. So, we're roughly $12,000 under what we had thought these would come in at. So, since it was the 14th, love was in the air, $12,000 under. So, this one came in well. As Hank said, we will bring the March 7th big opening to you soon. We're still reviewing and going through scope with all those contractors. Also, on April 3rd, we have another MFP bid that's going out. And on April 4th, our capital projects are going out. Two coming up here after spring break, so we'll bring those back to you as well. Probably the 15th business meeting. Don't answer any of the questions, I just want to do a quick recap for you.
Just from a procedural standpoint, White is on the hook for the 2.65 roughly. If the contractors end up going above their bids, White is contractually responsible for those overages?
We have built in to these and many of the ones that you'll be seeing in the future, not only a full contingency on the overall Gmax itself, which is a percent. For construction, it's five. For architect and engineering, it's another 5%, and that's over the $112,000. Also built in these are some contingencies within the project itself for change orders. So, they bid with some allowances that were added as well into this for those unforeseen's. But to ultimately answer your question, we certainly don't want to go over the budget, but that would just kind of nudge into our...
Contingency.
Our contingencies overall. Hopefully, it'll only eat the allowances that are already built into these bids.
So, we're working... I'll just start to blend the... Part of my master facility plan progress report was going to be talking about... We have a core team meeting coming up on April 4th, so Mike and Don will be in the room for that or have invited... Been invited, I don't know if they'll be there. But at that point, we're planning on bringing kind of an update of the overall budget plan to that core team, and then after that, it'll come to the board because there's some, just some decisions that need to be made around or recommendations to the board around some things like alternates and those kinds of things that we want the core team to weigh in on. But we're working on a kind of a budget spreadsheet for the board that kind of breaks this down in a little more of an understandable way so you can see how much is actually bid out in the overall cost, how much is allocated for contingencies, alternates, those kinds of things so you can get a better overall picture. This is kind of giving you just the first kind of general feel for how things are coming back, and then we'll go into a more descriptive breakdown in future meetings. All right, and then other master facility plan progress. I just stole some of my own thunder. You know, I want to talk a little bit about that. Jill has been real active with the White communication team in talking about how we're going to communicate out what's going on, the milestones, the constructions underway. They've even been talking about signage inside of the buildings and kind of some creative marketing for students to know that, hey, this has started and things are underway. So, a lot of work around that over the last few weeks. And then bids have been the big, big thing that we've been working on, and then a few small design details here and there, but nothing huge. Since the last time you saw stuff in January, it's been small details of designs that, you know, we've worked around kind of the edges, but no significant design conversations because we're at that tail end of Phase 1 right now, so of the design part. And then after Phase 1 is really launched and the bids are all in and we know what's happening this summer, we'll start up the... Bringing the design teams back together for the areas that are impacted in Phase 2. So, we ramp right back up again for the stuff that's going to happen a year from now. So, that's kind of where we're at in all of this.
We're also meeting this week and next week on some furniture for the entire project, so those meetings are coming up. Today, we met with our controls for our building automation systems. Today, we met with our controls for our building automation systems and had some discussions with them. So smaller meetings, as Hank said, but we're trying to intertwine everything and then roll it out for the three years as well. Standardizing the furniture is huge right now, and that's what we're really working on.
How's your model room feedback come, come from the students? Are you feel comfortable that you've gotten adequate feedback to make some decision-making?
Definitely enough feedback, and good feedback, I think honest feedback. Some things were well-liked, some were not. Some were space issues. Some of the classrooms at North are just smaller than the classrooms at South in the maneuverability of those chairs and a bookpack area where they can put their bookback. So great ideas, especially from the students, and then, you know, the writing surfaces of the desks and the walls, so we'll be able to break that down better and then come to a conclusion of what really is working for these areas.
No surveys went out, what, in the last week or so?
I'm no longer in the classroom.
Are you in there, Kirk, in the classroom?
Yeah, I'm in the classroom.
Did you get a survey recently?
Oh, yeah, we did. We got a survey like two weeks ago, and then we were in an email, and I think we were just supposed to fill it out in our...
So we're still, those just went out, so they're just, the data's coming back in. White will prepare a report on all of the student and staff feedback that will be coming to the board, I'd say in the next month or so, so.
Tell your classmates, be brutal. You want to hear?
Oh, I know they will be.
Good.
Yep, we've already heard rolling, rolling high chairs and rolling high desks are not a good combination.
Oh, ouch.
On carpet, yes.
On carpet, yeah. So it was good. It was good to do these tests, you know, so.
Okay, have we had any freedom of information?
Oh, we've had three that we responded to.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there any item that any member of the board wishes to have further discussion about?
I would just like to say thank you to Orange Theory for the donation of the treadmills. I think that's fantastic.
Absolutely.
I did, I was wondering, with those treadmills, are they new or are they used?
They're used.
Yeah, they updated theirs and then gave us their, but they're in great shape. So we checked them out, they're in good working condition and, yeah, okay. Yeah, they're in great shape.
So just in case people haven't, are unaware, it was, how, it was third?
Ten.
Ten.
Ten, valued at thirty-five hundred dollars a piece, you said, so.
So those are quite quality ones.
That's quite a contribution.
Yeah.
And they look great.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Oh, yeah.
So thank you, Orange Theory. So do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for Board of Education to approve the consent agenda, which includes A, personnel report, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, fifth year full-time renewals, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, fourth year full-time renewals, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, non-tenure full-time renewals, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, non-tenure part-time renewals, appointment certified appointment classified, personnel report, resignation certified resignation classified, financial pages, student tours, Illinois High School Association, IHSA, membership, and F, acceptance of donation of Orange Theory Fitness treadmills.
Thank you. I think you did that in one breath.
Wow, that was impressive.
I didn't want it to look... It was really impressive. Now he's going to drink the water.
You can take a breath now.
Ruth Pavanato.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka. Aye, the consent agenda passes. We're moving on for recommendations for action.
Nancy, can I just say some, one other thing on that?
Sure.
Jill's in the audience. I mean, posting something like that on social media and allowing that public business to get a little bit of good press could go a long way for other businesses to consider doing similar things.
Very good point.
Yeah, immediately after they showed up, both schools started posting pictures of them in the schools and thanking them, so.
And I would like to mention, we dispersed them equally between the schools.
Yeah, five at each school.
Five at each school.
Yeah.
So.
No, that's a good point.
Because some schools don't do that.
I get it.
No.
Okay. Anything, was, was that it, Don? Did you have the else to add? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're moving on to the recommendations for action. Do we have a motion for the resolution authorizing notice of honorable dismissal of non-tenure teachers other than final-year probationary teachers?
So moved.
Mike moves. Second. Three seconds. Thank you. Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka. Aye, motion carries. Do we have a motion for the approval of textbook recommendations for two thousand nineteen through twenty? So moved.
Second.
Dan, thank you. Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Nay.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka. Aye, motion carries. Do we have a motion for the approval of textbook recommendations for two thousand nineteen through twenty? So moved.
Second.
Terry, Mike, yeah. Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Nancy Cupka. Aye, motion carries. Acceptance of bid for asbestos abatement?
I'll make that motion and thank Jim for his sacrifice. Here.
I'll second.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Nancy Cupka. Aye, motion carries, and the renewal of the transportation contract was supposed to... Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Okay. Do we have somebody who's working? We motion for the Board of Education to approve the four point five increase in service rates proposed by First Student, Inc. for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year, and authorize the administration to execute all necessary documents to continue this contract?
So moved.
Dan?
I'll second.
And thanks to Mark, even though he isn't listed here.
Yeah.
Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Don Renner.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka. Aye, motion carries, and Julie muttered, but it's turned gray.
Oh.
This is...
Ouch!
You're there.
Where's the love?
Not, but it's, it's fine, it's a good look.
It's a good look.
It's a good look.
It's a good look. This is the second reception of visitors, which is intended for audience members to address the board on any topic pertaining to Community High School District Ninety-Nine. Does anybody wish to address the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to communications and announcements. Don, do you have anything to report on Lend?
No, Lend has not met since our last board meeting.
Okay. SACID, I missed the last meeting because we were at the legislative meeting in Springfield. There's another meeting Wednesday. The notes just indicate that things, you know, they're preparing for the transition with the executive director and business manager leaving. Ninety-Nine Education Foundation?
Yes. As you saw, we gave out some grant money tonight, and Pizza Wars was a huge success. We had six hundred guests, and we raised fifteen thousand six hundred dollars, and it's the second highest amount raised in the six years that we participated. So thank you all for attending, and we want to thank our nine pizza vendors, we couldn't have done it without you, and we had thirty-five community sponsors, so keep the, keep the good times coming.
So more than half the money was raised independent of the people who came for Pizza Wars?
Yes, yes. Most of the, most of the proceeds were from sponsors, so. We really appreciate it, and our students really appreciate it because eventually it all goes to them.